Welcome to the May 28, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Praise God. Lord, thank you for another day of life and all of the gifts you have bestowed upon us. And thank you for the opportunity to work together to better the lives of the people of Sandusky. Please guide us with your hand of enlightenment as we move forward this evening. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all."
Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Coontz.
Here.
Mr. Crable. Ms. Fargo. Here. Mr. Wantington.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
We have a motion to excuse Commissioner Crable.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion will be approved and Mr. Crable is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of May the 14th, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wantington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the May 13th meeting as presented.
There's been a motion and a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second without objection. That motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved and those minutes are approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name, address, and your agenda comments. Nothing, Tom?
Nothing.
Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda.
Item A, consent to ODOT for ERI US 6 Connectivity Cord Project. Item B, consent to agreement for ODOT ERI Market and Warren Street Reconstruction Project. Item C, consent for submerged land lease for the landing. Item D, approval of land bank purchase and sale agreement for Third Street Lot. Item E, approval of land bank purchase and sale agreement for 411 Meg Street. Item F, consent for Zone Map Amendment at 416 Warren Street.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I have moved for the adoption of these ordinances and resolutions pursuant to the section of the charter indicated in the communication.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just two items of note. We're not going to spend a lot of time on this, but we have two items on the consent agenda, folks who are redeveloping property in Sandusky, so-called infill housing. That's a good development to see. It's a great development to see. I'm very appreciative of those owners making the investment in our community.
Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you will present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Fairmount Properties LLC and North Coast Inns Incorporated for the potential redevelopment of the Jackson Street parking lot in Sandusky and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, this is not exactly a do-over, but it certainly is an extension. And I noted that we have a six-month time period on that, but can you explain to us how we're really not going to take six months to bring this to a conclusion? We're going to get that done a little sooner than that.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner. The first four months will be spent commencing a hospitality feasibility analysis, which is actually ongoing right now. And both parties, North Coast Inns as well as Fairmount Properties, will develop their base case financial modeling, of which they will then submit to the city of Sandusky around month four. And that will be the decision point where they decide whether or not to move forward into a development agreement negotiation with the city of Sandusky. If I may, the original RFP that was issued by the city in 2022 prioritized the development of a hotel and conference center. The city was open to additional development, and this team did propose a component that had residential and commercial in it. It resulted in their financial modeling, which projected the need for far greater subsidy than they probably could attract. So the development team is proposing the elimination of the residential development and a decrease in the commercial space and intends to model financial projections accordingly. With the support of GSP, they have commenced a study around the hotel and conference so that they right-size that component. And so that's what they need the additional time for.
Great. So we can look forward to perhaps a September 30th timeframe to know whether they're going to be going forward.
That is the goal, sir.
Great. Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the community reinvestment area agreement with the Community Building Partners LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute the community reinvestment area agreement and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
This has been a very carefully vetted project. I know Ms. Gilson has spent a lot of time on it, as have others in the city. This is a very experienced developer, so I'm very confident they'll be able to do what they said they were going to do. And I just want to point out, this is the third item of new housing that we have on our agenda tonight. So it's, you know, we've talked before that the housing shortage is a nationwide problem. We're down something, and we're short something like 6.5 million units nationwide. It's a multifaceted problem. It's a multifaceted solution. We have three solutions on the agenda tonight. It's just one of those things we need to keep plugging away at. We'll bring up an item under new business that kind of furthers that discussion, but it's a good thing that we're working on this.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real property located at 2123 Parkview Boulevard, Sandusky, and identified it as parcel number 58-01913.000 for the purpose of blight elimination and redevelopment and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pajali.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Incorrect. This is actually the fourth item on our agenda that's related to redeveloping housing.
It's all right. Entertainment.
Do like the song.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wantington.
Maybe Mr. Orsak can help me or Mr. Klein. We've got to be close to 50% as far as purchasing what we've purchased out there over the years.
I think we're pretty close. This piece of property became available from unfortunate fire in the area. The homeowner wanted to take it down and demo it by theirselves, and we wanted to acquire the property. We had anchor property on both the north and the south of this property on Parkview, which abuts the park. So we felt this was a good investment, as we do the infrastructure projects coming up over the next year or two in that area to offer some housing in that area. So it fell in line with what we've been doing in previous years.
Ms. Gilson, am I correct that we are getting an empty lot here? The owner of the property is going to bear the cost of the demolition?
That is correct. The house is actually already taken down, and I spoke with Mr. Patel this morning to ask about the remaining debris that is on the lot. It is scheduled to be removed, leveled, and seeded this week.
Okay, great. Great. So we're paying $20,000 for a lot, and that ties, will tie together three properties. Great. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the community reinvestment area agreement with the Community Building Partners LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute the community reinvestment area agreement and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. I understand that Mr. Klein from BAS is in the audience.
Yes, I am.
Would you like to speak?
Sure.
And I'd like to thank you for staying in the city. If you'd come to the podium, we can get a better, you've got a great voice. I'll start off with that.
Well, thank you.
I want to thank you for staying in the city. You've been a fixture in this community for as long as I am old.
Wow.
That was a softball for you, Mr. Murray.
Well, we're certainly proud to have the ability to be able to stay in the city. It is a wonderful community to do business in, and we have, most of our staff is from Sandusky. So it's really cool. BAS Broadcasting has 11 AM radio stations, eight internet stations, and we have websites naturally for all of our stations. Here in Sandusky, we have Mix 102.7, WCPZ, Coast Country 100.9, and WLAC, AM and FM. And our hope is to spend many, many, many years here. We don't move around. It was with great regret that we are going to have to give up the hut. However, the hut has drained me dry. I tried to keep it in good repair, so we decided to move. We purchased the property at 1651 Tiffin Avenue in Sandusky, the Old Forest, which moved out, I believe, about two or three years ago. So with this money, we're hoping to help subsidize some of the extensive work that we have to do inside. When we visited the property in January, we found out that water had been running for a considerable period of time from a broken main water line. So we experienced about two feet of water that had run for maybe three, four weeks. So we've got a considerable amount of work to do, but hired a local contractor. We're going to get everything up and running. We close tomorrow, actually, on the building, and we hope to be able to start on Saturday with the construction. Because of your help and your graciousness, having the ability to be able to get this loan, we truly appreciate it, and we are going to put it to good use. Again, thank you all for your help and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
Ms. Fargo. Oh, no. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
I was going to ask Colleen, if I could.
Yes.
Just to help me understand the program of loan, how we do this, and I'm so grateful we could do this for them and keep them here. Just how does that work? How much money do we have in that fund, if you will, to be able to do that? And I know, I think it was about 7%, right, is what he got for BAS? So how does that, how does it work for other people looking to maybe do this in the future?
Sure. Thank you for the question through the President to the Commissioners. This is the first loan you're seeing through the retool guidelines for the Economic Development Assistance Program. We get about $500,000 a year. We did carry over a balance from last year, so we have a healthy balance right now. And for this particular, this fits in the category of a business development loan. So the total project cost is between $100,000 and $500,000. And we'll consider up to 7% of the total project cost minus acquisition, which we did reduce acquisition out of this, which then led us to about the $13,000 mark. Above $500,000, the city may consider a 10% of total development cost. For projects under $100,000, we are still considering grants.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gilson, in this particular case, though, I believe I'm correct when I say that this is a 0% interest, and it is totally forgivable if the recipient hits the targets that we're talking about, one additional person.
You are correct. You are correct, sir.
Yeah, great. Great. That really works for everybody. Great. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would just mention that a few months back, maybe more than a few months back, Ms. Gilson started working on this with her staff and tuned up these guidelines because we had gotten some complaints. And of course, I was a little lary about some of the guidelines myself, and I think she's done a nice job to tighten things up. And as we move forward, we'll see how things work, and if we have to adjust, we'll adjust as we move forward.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Piggybacking on Commissioner Pajali's remarks, we'd long anticipated that we would get to the point as a city where we could kind of throttle back on some of the incentives that as the city gained a certain amount of momentum, which we have today, of course, that we could spread some of that a little bit further and maybe not quite so much. And I, yes, this is one of these things that we're going to kind of have to constantly monitor, because we may need to back up a little bit, or we may find out that we don't need to be as generous as we are. But that's just one of those things that we're going to have to take this year by year. But I do think it's appropriate to tighten them up the way we have.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Audience and staff, I have two donations. First is, Sandusky Rec would like to thank David Stedman for a $500 donation to the Red Popcorn Wagon Fund. The donation was given in the name of Lynn "Nota" Grothwall Stedman and will be deposited in the endowment account for the wagon if I get a motion for that donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. The motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to the Friends of the Greenhouse and Juanita Fenton.
And the city strategic plan public survey is open through Friday, May 31st. We encourage any resident or local business owner to complete the survey if you have not already done so. A link to the survey is posted on the main page of cityofsandusky.com. Paper copies are available at City Hall and Sandusky Rec at Mills. The recycling center will be at the city service complex, 1024 Cement Ave. Will be closed from Wednesday, June 12th to Tuesday, June 18th for parking lot repaving. Access to the municipal courts will be maintained. Public Works, a reminder to all residents and property owners to please complete the water service line inventory on our website at www.cityofsandusky.com/waterlines. Rec, Sandusky Recreation, would like to thank Bay Shore Counseling and owner Henrietta Whelan for their sponsorship of Yoga on the Pier. Yoga on the Pier is held on Saturday mornings on the Jackson Street Pier at 7:00 AM and runs through the summer. This program is free and open to the public. And the Ohio Bike Week Block Party runs from this Thursday, May 30th, through Saturday, June 1st. The schedule of street closures can be found online at www.cityofsandusky.com/bikewake. That concludes my report for this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions for the city manager? If not, we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Two items, please. The first item is one, we're kind of revisiting a passage or a chapter from the city's past. We had a process for a while that was interrupted by COVID, I think, where, and Commissioner Pajali reminded me of this last week, where we would receive an invitation from Ms. Myers, and we would be able to indicate whether we would be able to cover that particular event and make sure there was some, you know, a commissioner or two there. It's important that we, you know, we act as a body and we get our eyes and ears out there and find out what's going on. This past weekend, I was pleased to be able to attend two Memorial Day events, and I know we're all busy and we can't all attend them, but, you know, had I not been there, we would not have had representation. So it's important that, you know, we're all busy, we all have different schedules, and so I would just ask Ms. Myers to give that some thought in terms of how it is that you might interact with the commission and send out a reminder maybe and say, is anybody covering this or that kind of a thing? So I think we could return to that schedule that we had pre-COVID. I think that was a, that was good system, not scheduled, good system. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may continue.
Sure.
The other item that I would like to just comment on, it's particularly directed at Ms. Gilson, I'm afraid this seems to be your night, Ms. Gilson, but housing being the topic that it is, I shared an email about a month ago. Now, the legislature continues to consider some funding that would be prioritized to communities that have housing-friendly ordinances in place, elimination of minimum parking for rentals, accessory dwelling, parking, a lot of other things. It's kind of a wonky laundry list, but it's a very important laundry list. And over the next couple of months, because the legislature is not committed to funding for this yet, but over the next couple of months, assuming that funding seems to solidify, I'd really appreciate staff's recommendations in terms of, I think if you had to have, if you had six out of 12, then there was a special pool of 25% of the money was set aside for those communities only. That's a big deal. It's a lot of money, potentially, too. So, and that's going to require legislation, so we need some, we need enough runway time to make this work, and there's, we don't need to rush it, but I would appreciate your recommendations at some point in time, so we can give that to Mr. Hastings, and he can take the appropriate steps to put together legislation for the commission's consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you. And through the chair, if I may address, we are so very lucky that our chief planner sits on the APA board for Ohio and is part of the legislative committee, so she is tracking it very closely as well. So we've been having conversations in our office and will surely bring forth some recommendations.
Good lateral move. I like that.
It never ceases to amaze, it never ceases to amaze me that when we bring an issue up, whether it's Mr. Murray's issue or any of our issues, it seems like staff is already there or already moving there. That's a compliment, I mean, to the entire staff. I see that in the police, I see it in fire, I see it in engineering, I see it in planning. That doesn't happen by, you know, by accident or by coincidence. That's a sign of a very good staff. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman, just a question on this topic. Will that, will the recommendations also go before the planning commission? Before the final recommendations would come to the city commissioner? I know there are certain members of the planning commission that would like to see those.
All right. Through the chair, I am not 100% sure, but we will certainly get back to you on that
there, or already moving there, that's a compliment, I mean, to the entire staff, I see that in the police, I see it in fire, I see it in engineering, I see it in planning, that doesn't happen by, you know, by action or by coincidence, that's a sign of a very good staff. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman, just a question on this topic, will that, will the recommendations also go before the planning commission, before the final recommendations would come to the city commission, or, I know there are certain members of the planning commission that would like to see those.
All right, through the chair, I am not 100% sure, but we will certainly get back to you on that answer.
Mr. Hastings, I understand we have a new hire.
Yes.
And I'll turn to you to make that introduction, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. President, it's my pleasure to introduce to the commission our newest member of the law department, Assistant Law Director Melanie Murray, Melanie is a graduate of Miami University in Oxford, Ohio, she went on to law school at Cleveland State University, where she had a stellar career, including being the managing editor of the Global Business Law Review while she was at Cleveland State, she has deep roots in this area, she served as Perkins Township as an urban planner, zoning inspector, and she even served with the city of Sandusky before as a member of our Charter Review Commission, so Melanie, if you could stand up so that the commission can see who you are.
We won't require a speech this evening, but that'll come later.
And we are thrilled beyond belief to have her on our team.
Thank you, and thank you for taking a chance on us.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, additional comment related to housing, excellent job, by the way, you're doing an excellent job, I've noticed as I drive around the city that there are signs on some of these land bank properties that actually indicate that they're land bank properties, so I'm wondering how is the decision made for what properties actually have those signs posted, and why is it that we can't just post those signs everywhere there's a land bank property, and maybe there's some reasons, but I'm sure you have the answer.
Through the commission president to the commissioner, there is a lot of property within our land bank, so that would require producing about 100 signs, so we are moving them around to different locations, rather than create 100 signs, and the goal is to sell those properties and then those signs would become obsolete, so we had a handful of them produced, and we've placed them out, and we'll move them week to week.
Okay. Ms. Gilson, the list, I have seen the list of those properties, if a resident wanted to see that or access that, is that on our website, or how would they get that?
It is.
It is publicly available.
It is, and we're actually, with the retool of our website, is now far more interactive, you can actually see a picture of the lot and get all of the information that pertains to that.